I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order for December 1st, 2021, the last meeting of 2021. In-person meeting at the Watertown Municipal Center, Town Council Chamber, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. I'd like this meeting to come to water, but before we start, we all here are for various reasons, and I'm sure attention will be paid and respect for all. Carol, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Raymond Antonasi.
President.
Richard Antonetti.
Here.
Ken Demiers.
Here.
Dan DeVito.
Here.
Dan Gelati. Lou Esposito. Bob Marinaro.
Here.
Dave Poehl.
Here.
Lou Cavallo.
Here.
Joe Duvall.
Here.
For the absence of Commissioner Esposito, I will place as a regular member Commissioner Marinaro. So be it. The next matter is, of course, we're going to have public participation, and we have various items on there for participation. Please limit comments regarding matters that are not officially on the agenda. So any matter that is not on the agenda, it is open for statements from the public. You have a mic? Please state your name and address if you have something to say. Public participation? Public participation? Public participation is closed. Let's move on with the order of the agenda. There are orders, there are agendas available and material if you are looking for how we are going to be moving. Acceptance of the minutes, this requires a vote. Do I have a motion for the November 3rd, 2021 meeting? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from November 3rd, 2021.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstention, hearing none, the motion is carried unanimously. We then will go to a staff report. Mark, do you have anything to report at this time?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I have received informal guidance from the subcommittee that's reviewing the zoning regulation changes and implementing means for them to further review the proposed changes and revisions to bring to the, to bring to the, to bring to the commission as a whole, hopefully in a, in a couple of months. We've been working on a final adoption of a, of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's a region-wide plan of all the, all those surrounding towns that looks at natural hazards and attempts to provide mitigation for them with planning and preparation, and the town is in the process of just adopting that. I've been serving on the Steel Brook Greenway Committee that is choosing a consultant to, to implement, to design and implement the next phase of the, of the Steel Brook Greenway. So that's going forward. Of course, we've been talking to a variety of, of folks that are starting up or bringing businesses into town. That seems to occur on a fairly regular basis. One of note is actually a property on Hinman Road that mostly lies in Bethlehem that's being looked upon as a, as a venue for such events as weddings, car shows, things of that nature. The access is into Watertown, and we're just dealing with them to see what the review process might be in terms of traffic and all. That's all that I have to report for, for today, unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions from members of the commission to, to Mark? Any questions to Mark? Mark, on that Greenway, is that the one that will exit onto French Street?
Yes. One, one point is on French Street that would be the, what direction it is, but the, the crossing of French Street to connect with the existing Greenway, and it would go, it would travel up towards the, up towards the high school, past the, past the soccer fields and the, the, almost new dog park, and connect with the, with the existing Greenway in that area.
Right. I, I know we are considering for that, it's a med block crossing, flashing beacon for the safety of people that would be on the Greenway and crossing.
Yes.
That is a thing that we have put in for, and I think that'd be an asset. The state is citing certain places that would have these beacons for safety, so I just wanted to check if that would be.
Yes, that would be a very similar beacon to what's proposed on Main Street. Some of the consultants have a interesting and creative design for actually that, that French Street area, because right next to, adjacent to the fire department, the town owns a, a bit of land, and there's ideas for creating rest area there and some parking and some pedestrian, again, rest areas along with that, that crossing in that area. That's, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Okay, well, let's move forward on our agenda. Carol, would you like to read the legal notice, please?
I'm sorry, this one is the continued public hearing, so we don't need it yet.
Okay.
This is for, a continued public hearing number one for Castileon.
Okay. The item on the agenda is a site plan for a permit of 2021, 20 dash 24 Carmine Castileon for the construction of a Garden Brook Estates on 470 Turnpike, Straits Turnpike, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R-12 dash five age-restricted housing development. The overlay zone parcel, parcel 1D, is that correct? 1D? Mark, is that 1D?
ID.
ID map 152, block 256, lot 3. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
And can you please turn your mic on? Thank you.
Second from the right.
Okay, good.
That's good enough.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. My name is Seb Bavino, Planner of Kratsen Jones, representing the applicant. The map that I have on easel here for orientation purpose, this is Straits Turnpike, north is up on the map, and the proposed project is to be built on the west side of.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You might have to speak right into the mic. We can't hear you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Project is proposed to be built on the west side of Straits Turnpike, located, the address, I believe it's 470, Straits Turnpike, 470 Straits Turnpike. The land area for the property is 4.92 acres, served by all the utilities, water, sewer, and gas. The proposal is for 18 units of age-restricted housing. The allowed number of units under your regulation is 29. The proposed units are duplexes with master bedroom on the first floor with a one-car garage meeting your regulations. We propose nine visitors' parking spaces. It will be on porous material, like brick pavers. At the last meeting, the commission expressed interest in having visitors' parking, and we proposed nine based on staff recommendations. We spread them throughout the site. We have two on the right side as soon you pull in between these two units, then we have three here, two and two. So they're spread out throughout the site so that it doesn't look like a parking lot for a retail center. We propose landscaping around the units, low shrubbery, flowering shrubs, and evergreen and street trees along the driveway, on the right and the left side of the driveway. Each unit will have a private patio in the back of the unit. The street and unit lighting is proposed to be full cutoff LED lighting. There's poles proposed from the street up to the cul-de-sac. The proposed open space exceeds the 35% requirement. The area at the top of slope will have a wooden fence with plaques on it indicating that there's open space to the north associated with a brook. The IT manual indicates that this is a low-traffic generator. The site is expected to generate four morning trips entering and seven exit, exiting. In the afternoon, peak hour, seven will be entering and five exiting. The peak hour is considered to be 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning and 4:15 to 5:15 in the afternoon. The driveway has a good site distance of 520 feet south, 530 feet north, actually all the way to the signal that, signals that they're there on Straits Turnpike. In our opinion, there are enough gaps in the traffic to allow safe left-turn movements. After the town approves this project and before construction begins, an encroachment permit will be required by DOT. They do not act until the town acts. We believe that this project is good for the community. We ask that this commission considers acting favorably on the application. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the members of the commission? Any questions from members of the commission? Commissioner Duvall? Is your hand up?
No.
No? Okay. Seeing none, Mark, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments. Obviously, this is a continuation of discussion from the past, from the November meeting, some changes that have taken place. Are the, as, as indicated, the nine, nine visitor spaces are now proposed under advice of the commission and staff. That standard actually we applied or suggested, it could be applied from the number of visitor spaces for an ARHB development, which would be a much larger development, but similar. So that, that worked out. The current maps, which are now dated to 12/121, reflect a relocation of visitor parking spaces outside of the front setback to address a comment from the town engineer. Just to reiterate, the applicant is proposing 10% affordable units. That would be two, a total of two units. Parking requirements were questioned previously, and we can confirm that one parking space per dwelling unit is the standard. It does, the regulations do not specify the specific location, although they, one of the standards is to have a garage, a garage space, which to me indicates just to, virtually to have, have a garage uni, in that, in each unit. As, as Mr. Bavino was commented, it's subject to Connecticut DOT review for, for an encroachment to the state highway, and I had asked him, and he has provided you with information with regards to traffic. Just to note, the final town engineer review is dated 11/29/2021, and it appears that all comments have been addressed to his satisfaction, not to speak for him. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Mark. Just want to comment, one of the issues, other issue was sidewalk to the crossing, crossing there at the, was, is there sidewalk down to the corner?
There's a sidewalk all the way to the corner on the south side, and then sidewalks across the street in both directions going to the signals.
That's a very busy street, and I think that was necessary, and I'm happy that you did do that traffic report, site distance. I think that is also a matter of safety for cars turning left and right and having the proper site distance, and then looking forward to DOT approval once we pass it here, if we pass it. Okay? Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Have any other comments? I will ask for public comment now.
No, sir.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this development? Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this development? Anyone here? Seeing none, I will then ask the applicant, any further comments from the applicant?
No more comments, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments from commission members or staff?
I'd like to, through the chair, make a comment. The last time we were here, I had a problem with tandem parking, but when I refer to Section 34 of the regulations which are reviewed today, there's only requirement for one parking space per dwelling for age-restricted housing, so this does comply. So I stand corrected.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any further comments from the, let's see, we're public, any further comments, comments from the public? And lastly, applicant? We are finished?
We are.
Very good. Seeing that that matter is finished, I think we are ready to close the hearing.
I have, I have one comment.
Yes.
To make through the chair. Mark, in your report, did I hear you correctly, and did you say that two units were going to be assigned to affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
We're at, at the stage now where we can close the public hearing. If somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstention, hearing none, motion is carried unanimously. New public hearing. I believe we will read at this point the legal notice. Carol?
Yes. Town of Watertown, Connecticut, Planning and Zoning Commission Legal Notice. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Watertown, Connecticut, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 1, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the Watertown Municipal Center, Town Council Chambers, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, to hear a proposed text amendment to the Watertown zoning regulations to allow professional office use within the R-20 zoning district, limited to those properties located on Connecticut Route 6, parentheses, Woodbury Road, R-20 residential district. The proposed amendments are as follows. Section 12.4, Table of Permitted Uses and Structures in Residential Districts, insert professional offices as a special permit, site plan use in the R-20, limited to properties located on Connecticut Route 6, Woodbury Road. Section 12.6, Uses and Structures permitted in specific residential districts, and new 12.6.18, in the R-20 district, professional offices may be permitted by special permit and site plan approval, but limited to those properties located on Connecticut Route 6, Woodbury Road. A copy of the application is on file in the Planning and Zoning Office, Watertown Municipal Center, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, between the hours of 8:30 AM and 4:30 PM, and in the office of the Town Clerk, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, between the hours of 8:30 AM and 4:30 PM, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 18th day of November 2021 and 25th day of November 2021, Luigi Cavallo Secretary, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Carol. The applicant here tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
For the record, Michael McBarry, that's from certified Porter Avenue in Nogatuck. On behalf of the applicant, Grady and Riley LLP, which is a waterbury law firm.
Welcome, Attorney McBarry.
Thank you, sir. We've been before the commission your last two months. In October, we came in just to discuss the concept that we're dealing with, and then we filed an application last month for the text amendment. Now, what we've done with our proposal is, in addition to amending the text if the commission sees fit to do that, but also have a requirement that it's got to be done by a special permit site plan approval. So it's not a blanket approval of just allowing a professional office within this zone, within the area of the zone, giving the commission a lot more discretion as far as the actual proposal that's before us. What you've got in front of you tonight is not a site-specific application. It's a, it's an application to allow the use within the zone. I think Mr. Masood's memo indicated there's perhaps 24 residents on, on the street that would, in this area that would fit the, the particular parameters of our proposal. Now, the commission's obviously aware that you act in two, when you act in, in dealing with zoning, you deal two different ways. One is a legislative capacity in which you're amending the zoning regulations or the zoning map, and the statutes and the law give you a very broad, broad discretion in that. Then you also can deal with the site plan, the special permits, and site plan where you're dealing in your administrative capacity, where you've got to follow the regulations and what's allowed within the regulation. So my client is the contract purchaser of property of 325 Woodbury Road. Having said that, we've got to remove that from our deliberation tonight, because we're not dealing with the property of 325 Woodbury Road. We're dealing with the area on Woodbury Road, which lays within the R-20 zoning district. I think if you look at your regulations, Section 12.4, and what's allowed within the R-20 zone, there's a lot of uses that would be a lot more intensive than a professional office. For example, under the special permit, a child daycare center or group home, convalerium, convalescent home, private hospital or, or sanitarium, a nonprofit institution, which is pretty general, a summer day camp, private recreational facility, public utility building uses and facilities, governmental buildings or with town, state of Connecticut or federal government, railroad right-of-way or passenger station, which is not something we're looking at, telecommunications facilities, bed and breakfast accommodations. What we're proposing is an office, a professional office, which, again, would have normal office hours, 9 to 5, 8 to 5:30, as opposed to what would be allowed under your regulations with these other varied uses. We're trying to, would bring something in that would be less intrusive, allow for the, the property to be used within this district, to be used as an office, with the board having the ability, when you come to, when, when you come to that point, to basically approve what you want to approve for the use of the property. We're looking at a minimal change to the character of the, of the properties, but again, we're not talking about, and it's difficult, we're not talking about this particular piece, 325, we're talking about the concept in general. In the event you see fit to approve the text change, we would then be back with architecturals, engineering, everything along those lines, wetlands approval, we understand we'd have to deal with the historic commission, but this is just a preliminary, very first step on the application process. I don't know if you have any questions, or if I can answer anything you may have.
Any questions from members of the commission? Any questions? Just want to highlight one more, some comments you've made of negative features that currently exist. One, you mentioned something about a day camp could be put in there.
That's under your regulations, a summer day camp is allowed.
Is there a pool on that property right now?
That I'm not sure of, but.
At the end of the property, I was looking at the map. And I, I did see a pool, so a summer camp, please no comments from the audience. The summer camp would be able to utilize the pool, there would actually be larger amount of traffic, bringing children in?
There isn't also a pond on the property as well.
And a pond, too?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a pool and a pond. The other thing you said, it could be opened up to a bed and breakfast.
Under your regulations.
Under our regulations currently. So that means, again, cars coming in, people staying overnight. I noticed that what is happening with large properties like this, you can break the housing in, I think in neighborhood towns, they take and make several apartment houses out of the large of building. I don't think this is appropriate. They can only do two, they could divide this into two apartments. Am I clear on that?
I would defer to Mr. Masood on that.
Am I clear that they could have an apartment and then divide it into another apartment and maybe other apartments? So it could become a complex with apartments?
Not necessarily, Mr. Chairman. You could have a, what we limited to, a, a two-family, a two-family dwelling, a conversion to a two-family dwelling would be, would be appropriate. Typically, with, in terms of a, an apartment, you're limited to one, to one apartment. So anything above that would be illegal, actually.
Okay. Well, there's something else you've mentioned that could be used for.
Several, a public utility building, private recreational facility, not defining what that means, a convalerium, convalescent home, private hospital or sanitarium.
Right. We just recently had an issue on elderly housing and whatnot, and we turned it down, but according to federal and state law, we had to approve it. So if it was elderly, convalerium, that could be that, for that use also.
Certainly. Also, there is a temporary special event use, so that would be really subjective based upon what the, what the proposal was for.
Yeah. I think it's important that we understand exactly what exists now as to what can go in there, and I think clarity is very important. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to move the matter forward. I believe the, no comments from other commissioners? No comment. We'll go to public comment. Any comment to the public? The mic is on the other side. If you want to come on down, state your name, please come forward, your name and your address. Good evening. Mask is a problem.
Thank you. Good evening. Jean King, 126 North Street, Watertown. We've met before. I'm the Chair of the Watertown Historic District Commission, and that's one of the reasons I'm here, but not entirely. I'm very concerned about the idea of your making a change for one piece of property by changing the, the area for a number of pieces of property. And I hope that, among other things, that you folks will have a, a site visit and go out and walk around that neighborhood and see what properties are actually there, because out and walk around that neighborhood and see what properties are actually there, because the property that's being discussed for the law firm is large, but most of the ones along there are not. All of the properties are in the historic district with maybe one exception, and I know Mr. Masood's given you a great map that shows all of this. I think it's just a really bad idea to make a change that affects things that, that no one has asked for. No one in our community has come forward. We have a plan of development for town, which has been adopted by you and by the town, which talks about areas that are residential. Our 20 is residential, our 10 is residential. We, certainly, it is appropriate for us to have more professional offices and commercial areas, but we have, we have areas designated for that. It isn't, the main street going through town, through Watertown and Oakville, has a lot of different opportunities in other places for properties. So it's unclear to me why we need to change the zoning in this area that will affect a lot of properties that are, you know, the historic district, these properties are different, they are part of the district, but they represent different characters at different times when housing was built there, a wonderful collection of housing along there, and residents who live there and want to continue to live there. But I think you all also understand that when you start to change one piece of property in terms of the designation, that it could have not positive, but perhaps negative effects. And I noted that Mr. Masood said, "The inclusion of professional officers as a permitted use will likely have the effect of change of character to the area, particularly for the properties located within the historic district." I just don't think we need to do this, and I am not, I mean, I would really happy to have Grady and Riley have a really nice law office in our town. Maybe they'd like to be in the Munson House. That would be a really wonderful place to have, have that, because there's parking there, and it's where there's some other things going on. But I think there are areas in our town where we can have that kind of commercial or professional development, not commercial, I understand that. And I think that's what you should consider really carefully about, the whole idea of changing this, and it isn't just the historic district, it is the whole center of our town in many ways. I look at the difference, for instance, driving through Watertown, through that section that is designated as proposed, if you would drive through Woodbury, which is a lovely historic community, but the uses for professional things along the road through the middle of that town have really not been positive for the historic character, even with the historic district. I noted that there's, in the packet, there's a number of letters of support from people who think it's a great idea for the, the firm of Grady and Riley to come here and have a law offices. That's not what we're really talking about. You're talking, and it's, you know, we're not talking as Mr.
McBarry.
Rick Barry, excuse me, said, "We're not talking about just this piece of property. That's really a separate thing." This property is, if, I don't know if you've, it's a beautiful home. It has been gorgeously restored historically inside as well as out. That is not, you know, my historic district commission only looks at the outside. There is, and I understand that there also have been offers of other people who would like to buy the house for residential use. So it isn't, I'm, I'm not, I don't think it's your job or my job either to figure out how people get to sell their properties or change the zoning to sell their properties. So if you had any questions related to the historic district implications, I'd be happy to talk about it to you. But I hope you'll also continue this hearing and take a walk along that whole section of Route 6 and Woodbury Road there. It's really very pretty, no sidewalks, among other things, except in, in a small area, but there's really no sidewalks along there. But it's really, it's a beautiful part of our town, and it would be a shame to really do things that would change that character without really a need to do that.
I would like to assure you that I have been over in that area of Hamilton Street and also Buckwheat Hill there, and it's a very pretty area. I was impressed with the beautiful stone wall around there, the high shrubbery.
Yes.
And the driveway to the property is rather large.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, I'm sure members have gone over there, and we just don't blindly, you know, act on something. I want to assure you that we do.
But, and our concern is also not just that property. I mean, because I understand that, too, in terms of looking at that property, I wouldn't have, I really don't have an opinion personally, one way or the other, about how that particular property is used, but I'm really concerned about the implications for the 20, about 27, did you say, Mark?
24.
24 properties that are along Route 6 there, because that will make a difference. If there's a way to do something another way, that, that may be a way to do it. I understand that we can't do spot zoning either, but it's, it's, there are significant differences that will have real major impacts on our town in terms of why people want to live here and why people want to buy houses in this town, and why people want to buy property to, to live in with their families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Hugh Thornton. I live at 40...
If you want to lower your mask, you'll be clear.
My name is Hugh Thornton. I live at 46 Litchfield Road in Watertown. I want to further what the last speaker said about rezoning and about rezoning a beautiful neighborhood like that by presenting an image, say, of Bristol, Connecticut, where the, where, where poor city planning allowed for neighborhoods to be turned into duplexes and triplexes and sort of gutted the soul of the city. I think that what happens is if you put in an office space in a residential neighborhood, the houses next to it become cheapened, because nobody wants to live with a parking lot next to them or have the lights of the parking lot next to them. And then eventually, they have to sell out or to sell out, sell out maybe as duplexes or triplexes. The neighborhood changes. So really, what I'd like to, to offer in terms of that view is to not let the city go in that direction, but to rather focus, focus its direction on revitalizing the main street in downtown and bringing businesses to the main street to make that lively and not let the sprawl of main street sprawl out and infect neighborhoods which are already at their height of beauty. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir, over here. I did see, ma'am, yes. Please state your name and address.
Gail Curacillo, 51 Hamilton Lane. I live on Hamilton Lane, two houses down from this beautiful home. The parking or the driveway is not on Route 6, it's on Hamilton Lane, number one. Number two, it's going to put more traffic on Hamilton Lane. We have enough traffic going past my house daily with the school. People do not come in from Route 6, they come in from Hamilton Avenue, go to the school and out. There is enough traffic, we do not need anymore. It's a beautiful neighborhood. Let's not put something there that doesn't belong in a residential area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there someone over on the left? Ma'am?
Hi, Patricia Norman, 271 Woodbury Road.
Please state that into the mic.
Oh, Patricia Norman, 271 Woodbury Road. I live directly next door to this property, and...
Could you please, that's it, thank you, the phone was on somewhere.
To take it with Watertown, I've been to Watertown like all my, all my life, and when you look around and you see like all the businesses that took over homes and made them businesses, the lawyers, the insurance companies, the doctors, the dentists, none of them ever can go back to being homes, but most of them are in the business area, and I can't think of any of them that are really nice. They end up with big parking lots in their front yards, they're not used with the residents. There's something about when you have the roof over your head that you take care of it. And with Watertown hasn't protected its history. Like when you look at the Munson House, the town hall, the town hall annex, the Munson House was donated to the town, no mortgage, and they still couldn't take care of it. And it's always like money, 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 but the residents take care of their homes. They don't have more money than the town of Watertown, but they have the pride of taking care of it. The R-20 zone is the only thing that protects our street from changing all these houses into law offices, dentist offices, or whatever else, else is going to be if the zone is changed. Spot zoning is illegal, I still believe it's illegal, I think. So with spot zoning, you're only changing one parcel at the detriment of the other people, but because the lawyers know spot zoning is illegal, they've included all of us. We don't want it. Like, we just don't want it. That's, the R-20 zone protects our homes, and none of our homes are crumbling, but a lot of the homes that have been taken over by businesses, but they're in the business zone, a lot, none of, not very many of them look that great. I don't want our front yards to become parking lots because a dentist has come in or, you know, something on that type of thing. Right now, I believe you could have a home business and live there, and there is pride in when it's the roof over your head. And I think that, and the other thing to bring up just here is that one of the partners of this law firm sits on the town council. So I hope that doesn't make it a favorable person to have a shady deal. I'm not accusing you, I just hope that that doesn't become, that that person is a favorable person for this type of thing. Just, that's my hope. And could I ask the commissioner, the chairman, a question of, we used to get notified if there was anything that was having in the properties, if there was a planning and zoning, a public hearing regarding something that would affect the properties, like I think it was a 500-foot, or I'm not sure on that foot, but like if something was coming up of a public hearing that was in the neighborhood, we used to get letters. Is that not done anymore?
Mark, as far as changing a zone, is there posting anywhere, is, is that required?
Not by a text amendment.
Right, not on a text amendment.
See, that's tricky. Now, that's a little tricky thing right there, because it's not a text amendment, it's changing our zone from an R-20, it's a change of zone. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Is there anyone else, I believe, over there, sir? Yes? Could you please state your name and address?
George Norman. I live at 271 Woodbury Road. I'm the abutting property owner to 325 Woodbury Road. I have to be careful what I say, because I'm sitting next to an attorney here, so I'll be very careful.
You're being taped as well.
I'm being taped, okay. That's okay. Jean King got up and spoke and did a very nice job. I, having researched what the historic district's input and value is, is basically, is they provide a certificate of appropriateness. Use of this site is not appropriate. This property is on 3.3 acres, give or take. It's on a corner lot, Hamilton Lane, Woodbury Road. The property has a very large home, it's a beautiful home, it's a magnificent home. With that home is a swimming pool, a below-ground swimming pool. There is a pond that's been redug and resettled, and in the rear is a, basically a, a brook or a stream. So on this property, you have quite a lot of activity with Mother Nature. It's a beautiful site, and the driveway is on Hamilton Lane, which is a very narrow road, and you have a Jethson School. Now, Jethson School is named after Mr. Jethson, who built our house, and next door at 325, that house was built by Mr. Lilly, who was a short-term governor of the state of Connecticut. So there is a lot of history going on within our area. The issue really comes down to why the change, and since I didn't bring my glasses, I can't read it, but basically, the R-20 zone only allows a single family or maybe a two-family. And in the use of the two-family, it's very, very restrictive on that as to how that can be used, and it, it provides specific recommendations. As, as far as the attorney's approach on special plan and special permits for the use of the properties in a residential zone, which he's correctly read off of the planning and zoning regulations, those are items that are, in some cases, extremely extreme. But a professional office can be, can be a funeral parlor, it can be anything you want to call professional, because today, words don't mean anything. So people will question anything that you call professional. So here we sit next to it, and our house abuts it, and they want to change the entire area. Twenty-some-odd homes, 24 homes, I believe, are at risk, the purpose of which is basically, it's a difference between, I would say, a zone change and basically spot zoning, it's right in the midst of it. Here, they take in one house, taking it out of the cluster, and we basically end up the victims of their wants and needs. Now, every property has a value. If for some reason the seller's value does not meet the market, then the seller's responsibility is to reduce the price, or if the market is strong, he can increase the price. So it's, comes down to why hasn't the property sold? It's usually price. Price determines all things, so that's the issue. It's got nothing to do with the use of the properties. It's a, it's probably one of the most choice properties in Watertown, one of. So we're very much against it. I've raised my family there, my children both have gone to school in Watertown, one at Taft, one at Watertown School Systems. We've been there over 50 years. Our property is, is well-cared-for, we made a major investment in it. If you look down the street, all the homeowners have made major investments in their properties. This will diminish the value of the properties immediately, because a commercial use of a residential zone diminishes the value. I've been in real estate 50-some-odd years, so I'm not speaking as, too much as an amateur. I'm not too professional, but I'm not that much of an amateur. So I, I speak basically on what market's, market condition is. This will affect the market conditions very dramatically to the negative side. Now, we have Taft School, we have Jethson School, we have plenty of areas that basically require, that have a lot of students, kids walking around, a lot of buses, a lot of activity. We don't need any more activity than we have. Route 6 is a busy place, as we all know. So adding more to it doesn't add any value. Now, in a law firm, which I'm not against lawyers at all, they, they serve a very good purpose, but in a law firm, you have lawyers, you have staffs, you have per illegals... But in a law firm, you have lawyers, you have staffs, you have per illegals, you have clerics. It's not just one or two people. It's gonna be a big parking lot, a lot of activity, and they also have clients coming in, whatever hours they come. So there's gonna be much too much activity going on, and we should not bear the brunt of somebody who's trying to sell their property and maximize their profit. That's their problem, that's the American market, that's the way it is. So there's plenty of opportunities. And I'm understanding that there are other people that might have some interest. There has been some interest there in other places. One was a bed and breakfast, one was some kind of a operation for a church group. There's many, many others that have looked at the property for uses that really are dissimilar to what we would want to have in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Is there anyone else in the back there? I see your hand going like this. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Christina Atwood.
Into the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. Christina Atwood, 241 Woodbury Road. I'm one of the 24 vulnerable properties. I've been in my home almost 14 years. I specifically came here from Newtown, in a historic house where I lived for 30 years, to settle in the historic district. I very much support what Gene King has said and what Mr. Norman, and I concur with what he said. All of the letters in support of this change come from people who have another vested interest. I'm gonna quote one of them, who, when I looked him up, he's actually only been in his house for one year, though he's been in the neighborhood since 2008. He claims that 325 Woodbury Road, at this time, is best suited for a business because it has no garage. The house is many years old, very large, has a high purchase price, and is on a main road. Well, sorry to say, that, that's quite a few of the houses these days on Woodbury Road, and none of these letters are from someone who lives on Woodbury Road. None of us support this. This is, this goes against how we feel about historic properties. Now, I'm gonna be two doors down from the recently approved adult daycare, and now three doors down from a legal practice that's not gonna be a residence anymore? It's changing the whole character of the road, and I'm just very disappointed that our town cannot support one area where we can have historic properties. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Over there, sir? Please state your name and address.
My name is Joe Sheehan. I live at 259 Woodbury Road. I've been there for 45 years.
I'm sorry, sir, your last name?
Sheehan, S-H-E-H-A-N.
Thank you.
I agree with the eloquence of everyone else, but out of the 24 homes that are most affected, there's also the other homes in the surrounding area that will also suffer a decline in value. So many of the people that moved in those 24 homes were young people that thought, it's never gonna change, it's always going to look like this. And I saw the effect on our last meeting, on some of the people that put every penny they had into their homes, and it's going to be affected for the benefit of one, a law firm. That could go anywhere and do well. Doesn't have to come in for the benefit of one law firm, the effect it's going to have on 24 others in a peripheral area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments over on the right here? Please, into the mic, state your name and address.
I'm Catherine Donino. I live at 39 Hamilton Lane. I am adjacent to this particular property that's sort of in question, even though I know there's 24 other properties. I'm not gonna repeat everything that everyone else said, because I agree with them. I bought my house in 2000, and I saw what a beautiful neighborhood it was. I, the property in question at 325 Woodbury, which they're right, was changed, that used to be a circular driveway on 6th. The previous owner changed the driveway to be on Hamilton Lane. I just put in quite a bit of money in my backyard to make it more beautiful, because I figured I would be staying there for quite some time. I've never been to a planning and zoning meeting, ever, but when I knew this was happening, I am concerned. I'm concerned that my property values are gonna go down. And so I thought to myself today, do I have to move? Do I have to sell my house quickly before, okay, I don't mind a law firm, maybe, although I do, because I don't want a parking lot. My side yard is adjacent to the entire backyard of this particular property that is trying to be sold to this attorney. What I see is a beautiful pond right now, and trees, and landscape, and everything. I don't wanna look out and now see a parking lot. And I am concerned right away that it is going to diminish the value of my home, that I've worked very hard in the last 20 years to upgrade it. I've done the inside, I've done outside work. I just put $50,000 into my backyard for my pool and my patio and whatnot, to make it beautiful. So even if people see it from the road, they can see what I've done. My other question, and my concern, because I don't really know how these procedures work, is I did hear you say, if, after this meeting, if something gets passed, you're gonna go to the architectural part of what's gonna happen at 325. Does that mean it's too late? Does that mean we've lost as the public people? Because, okay, say you don't approve the architect, does that mean then it goes back to residential? Or it just means they have to come back with new architecture working? Can I ask that question, or?
A little confusing as to what is the, what is the nature? What are you saying?
What I'm saying is, I don't know what happens after this meeting. If, I had heard the attorney, I believe, say, if it goes through, if something goes through, I don't know, they're gonna bring up then the architecture of the design of what they wanna do to 325 Woodbury.
There will be a site plan that will come forth.
Okay. At that point, does that mean it's a done deal, that this attorney can buy this, and that you're gonna change the zoning then?
First, the zone has to change.
Okay, so, okay, so can you tell me what happens next after this meeting?
The commission will consider your testimony, the applicant's testimony, and we will then make a decision.
Oh, and then that's it? So, I mean, there's no, like, this is it? This is our one shot right here, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Okay, well, I do agree with what everyone else had said about the beauty of the neighborhood. And I am very concerned. I worked, like I said, I worked hard. I lived there alone for a long time, and I put a lot of my sweat equity into that house. And to think that my values are gonna go down is just, is just heartbreaking. And that's what I wanna say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. And I believe I did see somebody else wanting to comment, way in the back there. Please state your name and address into the mic.
Denise Russ, 135 Porter Street, Watertown. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but listening to all these residents, and they love their homes, they love the area, no one here spoke tonight in favor of this change. If this commission votes in favor of the change, you're not listening to the residents. You're not listening to us, and you're not doing what's best for the town and what they want. We already have an attorney's office on Main Street that has a large parking lot when you go down past it. And then we'll have something, I don't know what they're planning, but if you close the hearing tonight, do we get to speak about how the architect and what the structure's gonna be? Or are we out of the loop with that?
You're not out of the loop.
We can say we like the architectural design or not, and we could make changes at public participation?
Yes.
Okay. And also, this piece, excuse me, this piece of property, they're saying, has a swimming pool and a pond and other things. Why would an attorney's office wanna buy a house with all of that? Are they gonna just cover it all in, make it grass? I don't understand the logic of this one piece of property, why they want it. As Gene King stated, there's other pieces in town and everything else. So I do hope you do deliberate, you do not close the hearing and let these people come back, see the architectural drawings before anything is done. And if you vote in favor, yes. I have no faith in anybody. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any other comments in the public? Seeing none, I believe it goes back to the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I opened my, with my comments, trying to differentiate between your legislative and your administrative functions, most of these people, and they have concerns, are concerned about 325 Woodbury Road, what's going to happen at that piece. That's not before the commission tonight. What's before the commission tonight is the 24 pieces on Woodbury Road that would be affected by this proposed tax change. Little misunderstanding, if the commission sees fit to approve the tax change, we then have to come back with a special permit and a site plan approval, which would have engineering, architectural, design features that this commission has to review, and the public would get a second bite of the apple, as far as that goes. Mrs. King opened with, why didn't you just change this one piece? And then she acknowledged spot zoning. You can't just change the one piece. We spoke with this commission back in October about what we wanted to do, and here we are. Another gentleman talked about duplexes and triplexes, and how they affect adjacent properties. Apples and oranges, actually, basically, and what we're dealing with. Everyone has been dealing with and concerned about this 325 Woodbury Road. What's going to happen? How can you do that? That's not in front of the commission tonight. What's in front of the commission is three simple tax, proposed tax changes to allow a professional office. Your regulations currently allow for 19 uses within the R twenty zone. We're just adding one to, we're asking you to add one more use to that. It's not something that dramatic that is gonna be the end of the world. People have to remember, if you do see fit to grant this, 24 property owners within this district are gonna have the same ability that my client would have to change their, to change their home to an office, if they see fit. Many of the existing houses out there, residences out there, wouldn't be appropriate for an office. But, you know, we're not doing something to hurt the property owners, to hurt the neighbors. It's giving them an additional means to do something with their property. I don't know if the commission has any other questions of mine, so.
What I would like, if you would, sir Attorney McPherrie, I would like you to read what you have on the material that you submitted on October 21st, where it deals with reasons for the proposed amendment, and then also the impact of the proposed amendment. Though, if you would read those...
Certainly.
...two statements there, I think are relevant.
Under Section 60.2.3, we're required to provide a reason for proposed amendment. The applicant is a law firm presently located in Waterbury, Connecticut, with a satellite office in Woodbury, consisting of six full-time attorneys and support staff. Has been in existence since 1969 and has continued to expand and serve the legal needs of the greater Waterbury area. They've been searching for a location to relocate its practice in the area. The location at 325 Woodbury Road consists of a residential dwelling containing 8,600 square feet located on 3.3 acres of land. This has been on the market for a considerable period of time and fits the needs of the applicant for a new office. There are very few families who would be seeking a residence of this size, but it fits the need of the applicant for an office conversion. The impact of the proposed amendment, the conversion of the property from residential to professional office would have no noticeable impact on the surrounding neighborhood. The only visible addition to the property would be, assigned for the firm, an increased parking area in a 3.3 acre site. Plan of Conservation and Development, on page 4, page 4-8, Objective 3.2, stresses the promotion of commercial development in areas with supporting transportation and utility infrastructure. The town should promote business growth in areas that are served by sanitary sewer and water infrastructure. Objective 3.1 states that the most important goal of economic development is growing Watertown's grand list. Growth in non-residential development can help diversify the tax base and reduce the reliance on single-family households. In addition, the growth and diversification of the local tax base will provide the town with the financial resources needed to implement many of the recommendations of the Plan of Conservation and Development. Plan of Conservation and Development in Objective 3-3 recommends that zoning regulations and development standards be evaluated to determine if district's uses, setbacks, and definitions, parking requirements, and other requirements are appropriate. This should also determine what impact particular regulations may have on economic development efforts. Route 6, where the property is located, is located in a principal arterial road, POCD 3-7, which in 2015, according to the Plan of Conservation and Development, averages 9,200 vehicles per day. The conversion of a large residential property to professional offices would result in minimal change in these traffic flows.
The material that you have gathered here comes from a Plan of Conservation and Development...
The town's Plan of Conservation and Development, yes.
...which was a 10-year plan that is required by the state of Connecticut that we draft, and this was drafted in 2018, so therefore it will disappear another, within that 10-year span. So these are recommendations by a plan of people who feel that there is a future direction, that's the whole idea behind the Plan of Conservation and Development.
My understanding, a Plan of Conservation and Development is not a directive, it's a recommendation for future growth. And future, and as you know, every 10 years, a town is supposed to implement a updated POCD, so.
Right. And that's where you got this material?
Exactly.
And these are the recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from members of the commission?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner?
You know, we've listened to both sides, and I really just wanna give my thoughts. I think that a town needs to move forward, and I believe if we're not moving forward, we're moving backwards. I do think we need to look into the future. I do think professional offices on that Route 6 will not hurt that area. I think in this particular property of 325, I think that it would fit well there, of all the places. I do think that, you know, I'd rather see something like that than a two-family structure, where more traffic or more of a tax burden, where this will actually be a tax positive for us versus a negative. I see, I see a positive change for that, for the future of Watertown. I do think we need to be forward-thinking. I think everything is changing, it's not like it used to be. I think the millennials and Generation X are not looking for bigger homes, they're looking for smaller homes, or what they call hoteling, where they all share a home and share a kitchen and a room. So I think the dynamics of our world have changed really rapidly, and I think we need to consider looking at Watertown on what we need to do to change in order to keep up with modern times.
I appreciate your comments. Now, again, one step at a time, should the commission see fit to approve this, and we do come back with a special permit, site plan application. At that point, we can give you pictures, photographs, of what the current Grady and Riley office is in Waterbury. It's a very similar building up on Buckingham Street in Waterbury. It's not something that has any detrimental effect on the neighborhood there. So it's, it's that kind of thing.
I agree. I see a lot of offices in Woodbury, West Hartford, and other small towns that are in a residential historic district, and they seem to fit very well there. I personally don't see where this will affect real estate. I mean, I think real estate gets affected on its own, just even on my street, a gentleman... I mean, I think real estate gets affected on its own, just even on my street, a gentleman bought a house, and when he sold it, he lost $250,000, with no professional buildings, just because of the way the real estate market is. So I think, you know, real estate goes up and down, and I think that, you know, in this particular home, I'm not sure if he even got his money out of what he's selling it for. I don't even know what he's selling it for, but sometimes people put more money into their homes than its value, and they'll never get it out. I'm not sure if that's the case with this gentleman or not, but I do think that valuations of homes, the market dictates what happens. I'm not sure a professional office will change that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the commission? Yes, Commissioner?
Commissioner Cavalo, I fully agree with what you said. You're not moving forward, you're moving back. That is very well said. And I also agree that millennials are looking for smaller homes. But there was something that really caught my attention from one of the speakers, Miss You in the sweater, who said that historic, it won't go back. And that's very true, that if a property is changed, it won't go back. And it really can't. It can't go back to its original roots, because it would be way too expensive to get it back to how it currently is. I do have a lot of, I've worked a lot with historic homes, so I know what it takes. And I was feeling like I would be in favor of this. But that area, I think you, by changing it, you lose a lot of the character of the town. And if we're not going forward, we're not going back, but if we don't remember where we're from, we're gonna forget who we are, is what I'm concerned about. Not to say that I'm not for this, but I definitely have to think it through. And I would, I do want to say, to your point, you're absolutely right. Once you change these homes, they'll never go back. You'll never get that original character back, and they've been there for, you know, 100-plus years. And it's who Watertown is. So I think we need to really think about that, and what we're willing to change, especially in that area of town. I, you know, I'm very much pro-business, and I would love to see businesses come in. I just don't want to sell our soul to get them in. That's all.
Any other comments from members of the commission?
Yes, through the chair.
Yes.
Yes, for this, this for me is very difficult, because I am an attorney, and I know the attorneys, all the attorneys. But I do have a concern about one parcel impacting 22 parcels, where we have neighbors who object, and we actually have to change their zone. They've lived in these homes for many years. It has a distinct character to the neighborhood. It was a neighborhood that I used to live in. And I think, I think world of the law firm, I think it's a beautiful home. However, I want, I think we owe some deference to the neighbors and the people whose zone we're going to actually change. And, and that's, this is a difficult decision. This is, this is a beautiful home, beautiful area, and a very prestigious law firm with a good reputation. But I think that we all had, we have to all take this seriously, and not jump on it just because it might be commercially feasible, or a larger tax base, or something that's going to help the town. I think that that area, across the street from Taft School, is a special area, and I think we ought to recognize it as such. That's all.
If I might respond, Mr. Antonasi, just by adding a 20th permitted use to the R-20 zone, there's no requirement that the properties have to be used for that. Then it becomes incumbent upon the property owner to say, "Well, maybe I can use it. Maybe I can use it for a day camp, or maybe I can put an office in there." Just because it's an available use is no requirement that it has to be used for that. It's just another option available to the property owners. I understand what you're saying, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the members of the--
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I have to second what Commissioner Antonasi said, and you got 24 people out there that we're affecting. Not one of them want it. That's what we're voting on tonight. Not one of them want it, and I agree with them. I don't think it's appropriate. People worked hard on their homes, put a lot of money into them, and I think we should listen to what they're saying. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Any other comments? Future comments, last chance for the public? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask if the--
Would you please come, come to the mic? I believe you were here before. Just re, re--
Chris Atwood.
Ma'am, restate your name and address, please.
Sure. Chris Atwood.
Sorry, wasn't on. Chris Atwood, 241 Woodbury Road. I'd like to know what other properties in Watertown this prestigious law firm had looked at besides 325, and why this is targeted, and not the Monson House, which obviously we need to find a use for.
Mr. Chairman, that has absolutely nothing to do with the application.
Okay, well, I asked it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Catherine Danino, 39 Hamilton Lane. A question, when you said it could be a tax benefit, I think it was Mr. Cavalo, bringing this business in, does that mean my taxes will go down? I'm adjacent to the neighbor, to this property? Or anyone else's? I just don't know how that works. You said it would be a tax benefit. To whom? The town? To the town. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Last chance? Yes, ma'am?
Karen Rogopoulos. I'm sorry, I have a cold. I have a cold, sorry. 47 Woodbury Road. This does lower everyone's values. And you were talking about millennials. I live in an area, which many of you know, top of Academy Hill, Woodbury, the one-way. 211, obviously, sold. That was over 5,500 square feet. Across the street, oh, 47 Academy Hill, the old Mayorman House, just sold, over 6,000 square feet. These are all to young people. 7 Woodbury Road, to newly young married couples, over 4,000 square feet. The Hamilton Avenue House, just sold. 28 Academy Hill, also sold. These are all young families. I'm in the business, so to say that young couples are not buying larger homes is incorrect. You can't pick 24 houses, or, is that right, 24? And people have broken their backs, working sometimes more than one job, to keep their houses and maintain a beautiful area of Watertown. And aside from that, I do have clients who have expressed interest in this property as a residence, and was put off by someone. So there is outside interest.
Thank you. Any other public? Any other public? Any other public? Seeing none, we are going to ask the applicant, is there any more issues that you want to bring forward?
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. The fact that properties are selling is great, but it's got nothing to do with this particular application. The fact that everyone has spoken against this tonight, this is not an election, it's not a popularity contest. Zone changes, tax changes are based upon state statute, based upon your regulation. If the commission, in its legislative capacity, feels in its own discretion that the zone change being requested is permitted, doesn't matter if you have, if everyone here is against it. You're not elected, or I'm assuming, I don't know if you're elected or appointed, but it's not an election, it's not a popularity contest. The fact that people have been looking at these houses, again, the fact that there may be other potential buyers for this house, who cares? It's got nothing to do with this particular application. Because, again, we're not talking about 325 Woodbury Road. We're talking about a R-20 tax change.
Okay, that's, we, before we close, public participation and various comments by the applicant, I believe we have some letters there that are, one is from the Economic Development Chairman. Would you please read that into the record?
Yes, I have a letter here from the Economic Development Commission dated November 30th to Mr. Richard Antonetti, Chairman, Watertown Planning and Zoning Commission, 61 Echo Lake Water, Watertown, Connecticut, regarding proposed tax amendment to the Watertown zoning regulations from Attorney Michael McVary, to allow professional office uses by site plan special permit within the R-20 zoning district limited to properties fronting on Connecticut Route 6, Woodbury Road. Dear Mr. Antonetti, as Chairman of the Watertown Economic Development Commission, I would like to offer my personal support of the above-captured item on your upcoming agenda. It is my feeling that adding professional services to the approved uses for the zone will positively add to the economic development of the area and the town in general. Sincerely, Joseph McGreal, Chairman, Watertown Economic Development Commission, want a carbon copy to mark the suit.
I believe you have other letters of support?
Yes.
Would you please read the name and the letter?
Yes, there are 15 letters in support. The first one I have is from--
Do we have to listen to all 15?
Yeah.
I would like to vote on that.
Yeah, I don't want to listen to 15 letters.
All 15 letters. None of those people are here?
Obviously, considering the COVID situation, people are very concerned about larger gatherings. Obviously, they will not come, a lot of them.
I'm not going to name an address, so.
Well, we can do name and address, and maybe a brief, how long are the letters?
How long are the letters? They're, they're short, but there's like 15 of them. In support, I have one letter against.
Through, through the chair.
Yes.
Carol, do all those letters have addresses on them?
I did not get a chance to look today. Yes, they do, from what I can see, yes.
So can we maybe just get the name and address?
And the address.
That'll be fine, if everybody's agreed on that?
Agreed.
Agreed. Agreed? Okay, go, Carol.
So the first one is from John Lombard, 97 Buckweed Hill Road, Watertown. Another from Giovanni Orsini, 325 Woodbury Road. AIMEE, Amy Roberts, 150 Northwest Drive, Plainville, Connecticut. It looks like it came from a school.
Mr. Chairman.
She lives at 65 Hamilton Lane, I'm sorry. Sorry. Giuseppe Paletta, 25 Lakeview Drive. Joseph N O U J A L M, 33 Southview Drive, Watertown. Michael Kovaleski, 109 Warwick Road. Angelo L O I, 195 Neal Drive. Michael Distazi, 86 Windy Ridge Drive. Angela Distazi, 70 Lakeview Drive. Paul Gelati, 21 Birch Street. Donna Donato Orsini, 115 San Bank Road. Carm F A R E S E, 325 Woodbury, no, I'm so sorry. I don't see an address for him. I don't see an address from him. Bruno and Mary Desisto. I know that they live on Buckingham Street, I don't see an address for them. And Luigi Mancini, 57 Carola Drive. And latest one, David Rosa, 92 Buckweed Hill Road. So those are the 15.
And what is, you believe you have one negative?
Yes, I have one negative, and it's from Patricia R U D Z A V I C E. I can't pronounce her name, what is a V C? And she lives at 553 Thomaston Road.
Thank you. As you see, we are here rather late. We are more than happy to hear from the public, and we will have a little chance to make a decision as to where we will be going. If you'd like to stay, please do, but we will be making a decision on that matter. Do I have a motion to possibly continue the public hearing?
I move to close, I move to close the public hearing.
A motion has been made to close rather than continue for further discussion among A motion has been made. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing done, the motion fails. Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing.
Motion has been made, do I have a second on that?
And who made that motion, um, please? Ken?
Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing done, the motion is carried unanimously. Okay, let's move on to the agenda further forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the commission for their time tonight.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, yes.
That's right.
Next matter is dealing with a matters you might all be interested in, a 75-foot, four 75-foot poles, lighting poles, across the street from you. So you might be back to look at these 75-foot poles across the street at the, I hope you're all listening to that.
We know how to clear a room, huh?
The matter that's on the agenda is new business, a plan for 70-foot poles over at a, lighting up a field at the Taft School on Woodbury Road. 75-foot, 70-foot poles, not 75. Would you like to comment on that?
I would say you introduce. Yeah, yeah. So Jake Oden, the CFO at Taft, and I have with me Mike Mahoney, who works with Musco Lighting, and is working with our design and architect to design the lighting system.
I'm sorry, I did not get your name?
First name is Jake, and the last name is Oden, O-D-D-E-N.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I guess just as a brief introduction, the field, as you can, as the committee can see in the front here, perhaps, unfortunately, we lost our easel over here.
We have, I believe you said the--
Okay. So the field location is, just to clarify for anybody in the back, or for you all, is right in the center of campus. It's at the, it's actually below the tennis courts that quite a bit of the community uses at the bottom of the hill, right behind all of the lower campus structure. And then going up the hill is where most of the athletics actually take place these days. But this is one field that's sort of on the lower, lower tier of the campus, if you will. And the project was one that we had approved last March or April, or actually, not until, not until July, sorry, there's a couple of different projects going on. And it's under construction in terms of the field being converted from grass to a turf field. So it's a multipurpose sports field. And we would like to install athletic lighting, similar to what you would see at a lot of athletic fields around, actually, I think, at the high school and other places around the state, to enable, whether it be soccer games or other sporting events, to take place in the evening. It would mostly be probably a handful of times in the fall and a handful of times in the spring. And with that, I know Mike has some slides that can sort of speak to, you know, how these lights might be able to settle in and work well with the broader surrounding.
Terrific, thanks, Jake. For the record, Mike Mahoney with Musco, M-U-S-C-O Lighting. In the first slide I've got up here-- In the first slide I've got up here just depicts the fact that sports lighting is not immune to advancements in technology. So 45-ish years ago, on the far left, that's what what we're all of these poles are the same height. They're all producing the same amount of light out on the field. And you can see in 1977, more than half the light that we were producing at the top of the pole is actually being blown skyward and creating sky glow. You could tell for miles around whether there was a ballgame at night. Over the years, we thought we were doing, making great strides as we pushed that envelope further. But today, you can see in the far right, that's what we're able to do now with LED. Because we have, there's actually a couple hundred different diodes in each of these fixtures as opposed to harnessing the energy, electrical energy of one single lamp and trying to manipulate the amount of light that it produces, forcing it down onto the field. Now we're able to pinpoint the diode, each of those 200-plus diodes in each fixture, and push the light down onto the field. If we could go to the next slide, if we could, if you could scroll so we can see the poles to the my left. One of the always very big talking points, big areas of concern is how do we arrive at a 70-foot mounting height? Why can't we use 40 feet? And the simple fact of the matter is, it's just it's geometry for us. So in this case, we have four poles. So each pole, the lights on each of the four poles are responsible for lighting one quadrant of the field. So the fixtures themselves at the top of the pole have to be aimed out, the brightest point of that beam has to be aimed out to the center of the field. So you can see here, if the light fixture is aimed on a 40-foot pole, you can see the light fixture is aimed to the center of the field, but a bunch of that light in the upper part of that beam is being cast over the field onto adjoining properties because the aiming angle is too shallow. We take that pole, make it 70 feet tall. Now we sharpen that aiming angle, direct the light downwards. Now we've kept the same aiming point, but because that angle is now more acute, we're cutting off that light much sharper. And if we go to the next slide, this is where you'll see the the four pole locations, the S1 and S2 poles, which are on the the top side of the field. Those are both, they're actually all four are 70-foot poles. The S1 and S2 are actually on a seven-foot grade increase, which really helps us because those poles have to be further away from the field. So the height of the fixtures is actually 77 feet. And those fixtures need to be aimed approximately 165 feet to get from that pole out to the center of the pitch. To get at least a 25-degree aiming angle, which is industry standard for for sharp glare control, spill control, we apply a cotangent of 2.145 to get that angle. That gives us a mounting height. The straight math is 76.92 feet. So in this case, we're at 77. It's pretty damn close. So that's how we arrived at that particular height there. On the bottom side, S3 and S4, those poles are much closer to the field. So again, with 70-foot poles, we're aiming those about 148 feet. And again, apply the correct cotangent, and that gets us the straight math is 69 feet, closest sized pole is 70. So that's basically the mathematics behind how we arrive at the appropriate pole height. Again, there's four poles. The S1 and S2, I believe, have, S1 has nine fixtures, S2 has 10, S4 is nine, and the other one has 10. So very balanced amount of light. It's an appropriate amount of light for the level of play out at this field. So it's not being overlit, it's now being underlit. It's lit to an appropriate, safe amount of light. If we can go to the next slide. What we've done here is just show, and I apologize, it's it's these numbers are so small, but you could you'd be able to see that as the further you get away from the field, there's some practice areas out in what we call the D areas, just towards the track corners. But those, you're getting into single digits as far as foot handle levels. The field itself, those 84 target points average 50-foot handles. And then as we feather out towards the edges of the of the track area, we're down into the single digits, like around four, five, three, two foot handles. The next slide, what we've done here is isolate on that contour line. That's where the foot handles average one-tenth of one foot handle. So again, we're just trying to depict how well we're able to control the light, really focus it down on the field. The distance between each of those target points is 30 feet. So you can see just 60 feet beyond the field, we're down to a one-tenth of one foot handle, which is very minimal amount of light. And if we go to the next one, here we've isolated 150 feet around the facility. And those, again, every 30 feet, we're taking a reading. The average of those target points is three tenths of one foot handle. So again, just want to further depict how well we're able to focus the light onto the pitch. If we went to the next one, this is a picture of the the light fixtures themselves. You see every one of them is a has an external visor. They're full cutoff, dark sky friendly. Zero light is emitted above the fixture. So if you think back to that original slide where we had all that light being blasted upwards, here, all that light is being pushed down onto onto the playing surface. Again, a very, very dark sky friendly approach with zero uplight, full cutoff. Next slide, please. Just I've got a couple pictures which just kind of depict real life applications. This would be a very similar application, 50-foot handles horizontal. And you can see just how sharply the the light is cut off around the perimeter. Next slide, another one. And the next. Just also always want to mention the fact that Musco, we've been around for, I believe it's our 45th year. We work very closely with the National Parks Association, with International Dark Sky Association. We have a member of our company sits on their board. We're continually pushing forward to protect our night skies. This particular design that we're presenting tonight would meet the International Dark Sky Association Community Friendly Lighting Guidelines. So, you know, like I said, it's just a very, it's a design that's done with neighbors in mind, with wildlife in mind, with energy conference conservation in mind. The school also has the ability to not only utilize the 50-foot candle option, but because it's LED, there's a high, medium, low setting. So if they're out there just practicing, and they can hit a button and cut the foot candle levels in half, reduce their energy by 50%. If there are people just want to play frisbee at night, they can cut it down even further, reduce the energy by 75%. So there's wireless controls. So the school can schedule a time for the lights to turn on and turn off. It'd be a hard off at a, whether it's predetermined by yourselves or the school. It's a, there's a very simple yet complex control system that goes with it to ensure that the the lights are managed very well.
This is not like the old system where you needed time to warm up and then to downtime?
That's correct. It's instant on, instant off.
Right. The the issue as far as, I don't think we are interested, yes, in the lighting, but we are also interested in the impact that it will have on the neighborhood. And the neighborhood, as you have seen, is where the lighting will be impacting.
Sure.
And the 70-foot towers will be impacting this neighborhood. So I think we will have to set this for a public hearing to have the opportunity and openness for the public to see this. And I I believe there should be someone present to explain other than lighting, you know, because of the fact this is not, they do not have a lighted soccer field currently. It will generate therefore games, championship games, number of games, number of cars, traffic. This is all a matter that should be brought to the attention of the public for openness and understanding of what is going to take place. So I would urge you be prepared for that. And I would like a motion that we set this for a public hearing on January 5. And according to the calendar that I've looked at, it is not the 6th, it is the 5th.
So moved.
A motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for this. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously. We can move on to the next matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
See you next year.
A very enlightening presentation.
No unintended.
Guys, come on now.
That's as good as his jokes get.
That's my best line yet.
No, be in your face.
The next one is, the next one is setting a public hearing for a subdivision for Michael Jed for a proposed two-lot subdivision on 8 San Bank Road, map number 163, block 21, lot number eight. And this public hearing would also be on January 5, 2022. Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Do you want to present something quick, if we could?
For which?
I believe this is for the Jed subdivision.
Oh, the, yes, you're here, yes.
Yes, for the record, Brian Baker with Civil One, Licensed Engineer in the state of Connecticut. After reading the agenda, I had contacted Mark and had a discussion about the fact that for an initial subdivision, you are not required to have a public hearing. Of course, it's up to you, it's in your jurisdiction to. Obviously, for a re-subdivision after a parcel's been subdivided and it gets subdivided again, or for larger subdivisions, obviously, you always have public hearing. So this is only a one-lot, a two-lot subdivision. We're breaking one piece off of the farm. It's a family subdivision. They're basically taking a piece off and so that the son can have a home site. So I don't know if if you'd like me to give you a brief overview, and then perhaps you could decide whether you feel a hearing is warranted.
It's a two-lot with a housing in the rear, one driveway. Is that what I understand I read?
Yeah, so.
Comes in from Concord, I think. I have a question through the chair.
Yes.
Are you sure it's not a re-subdivision that they didn't chop off that corner of On Olive and whatever those two roads are there?
Yeah, so it's a bit confusing, but I'll lay it out for you. Here's how it works.
So that's maybe why we need the the public hearing.
What the way it goes when you're breaking up properties, your first cut off of a piece is called a free split.
Right.
That does not have to come before the commission. That just gets filed on, you draw the map.
Sure.
Zoning reviews it, you file it on the land records, done. Next time you split a piece off, that's the first subdivision. That's where we are with this piece. If you break off, then you if you go to break off additional pieces after that, that's a re-subdivision subject to a public hearing automatically. So we are in the-
You don't know what you're talking about, but does that make sense, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm confused. So, all right.
Yeah. So I believe you have 11x17s. I do have some of the larger maps. Right, I've got it in front of me. Maybe wants to take a peek, and I've got the boards here. So basically, what it is, is a 43-acre parcel, tax map lot eight, San Bank Road. Michael Jed is the applicant. The property is currently owned by his mother, two aunts and an uncle. East, so Michael came to us. They want to split off one piece up in the corner for a house, leave the remainder as the farmland. We have shown a house in septic on that remaining 40 some odd acres because when you break off a piece, even though we have 40 acres left over, we still need to show that you could put septic house and well. But the the goal is to build on the smaller piece.
That's lot two, right? The one you're not going to build?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We're building on lot one.
Right.
So the property has frontage along San Bank Road. Down in the lower area, you see the cornfields when you drive by. It's wooded and there's wetland area in the northeast corner. There's also a 50-foot access strip, a town right of way off of Concord Drive that comes into the property that was left back when the Concord Drive subdivision was done for access to this piece and potential road or whatever we want to do to access it. So what we're doing is coming from that upper Concord Road Drive access, we're going to extend the right of way and put in a common driveway that will serve lot one, which is one that's going to be more immediately built upon. So we have been before wetlands. They have reviewed and approved it. You can see we sort of moved the driveway, gave it a little curvature to pull it away from the wetlands in that area. So that would be creating the 4.23 acre parcel on the upper area, leaving the remainder to remain as in its current use as farmland. So that's the basic use. Because it's a family subdivision, and it would be going to the sun, open space is not required, for all intents and purposes. This is still functioning, going to function as a farm in open space. They have no immediate plans to do any additional development. However, we did, you know, just for good planning, we laid out this right of way in accordance with your town road standards. So, you know, if if ever the town or future developer wanted to extend the road through and connect, you could do that. There's no intent to do that this time, but obviously for planning purposes, if we're going to show an extension of the town road right of way and put a driveway in there, we want to make sure it's geometrically, as far as the curvature and the slope, is built to town road standards. But it would only be built as a 12-foot wide driveway for the for the residents. So that's basically summary what we're looking to do. And again, as far as subdivision goes, relatively simple. So it's obviously in your purview if you want to choose to have a hearing, but it's not required.
I have a question through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Questions, actually, for staff. Does this right of way have, does the town have to abandon it to them in order to put a driveway on it? How does the, where does the liability come in when you put a driveway on a right of way that the town owns and you're not bringing it up to current road standards?
I think we did a little bit of research on that, and it looks like when Concord Drive, and we couldn't follow it any further, when Concord Drive was created, obviously that right of way was, that rectangle was 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 placed there to obviously, to apparently access that that driveway, to access that parcel. Paul was just mentioning that the commission would need, it was being viewed as a shared driveway at this point. And one of the tasks of the commission would be to approve that shared driveway. that shared driveway with a two-thirds of a vote.
Shared driveways are okay in that zone?
Yeah.
With the three-quarter commission vote, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And I'm, as a side note, I'm not sure how you've handled it in the past with, but I have in other towns worked where we have, you have a common driveway or a residential driveway over a town right-of-way, and the property owner, you know, signs a whole harmless farm that, you know, that the town's not responsible for obviously plowing the road, it's, you know, they're not responsible for anything that happens on that, you know, piece, it's simply, basically indemnifies the town of any liability from someone using it as a, you know, as their personal driveway, the town doesn't have to take care of it, they don't have to worry about it.
Right. I, I was just going back in time because I've been around for too long a time, and we had an application years ago, very much similar to this. If I remember correctly, it, it didn't go anywhere because the town wanted the applicant to bring that whole right-of-way up to road standards. That's what I remember about the last applicant, that's why I asked the question. Whatever deal you make with them, you make with them, I'm not the decision maker, so...
I believe you have already been to inland wetlands and you have approval?
Yes, we, we do.
Right. So it's up to the commission, commission hearing, public hearing or not?
If it's not required, I say let's not do it. It's a two-lot subdivision on forty-three acres.
One, what do you say?
It's a, it's a one-lot, it's going to be two lots on forty-three acres, it's all family.
So no public hearing?
No public hearing.
Down here?
I agree.
Agree. So, Mark, do we move forward?
Sure.
Do we need a vote on this for no public hearing? What? I think that would clear the air?
It's just been accepted tonight, right?
Yeah. Do you have to vote on it?
I think we, they, they have inland wetlands.
It doesn't hurt to vote and decide that there's no public hearings required, and we'll just continue to the next meeting.
Let's do it. Okay. Continue to next meeting. Okay.
You can vote on it. You can vote on that if you say...
You want to make it?
The proposal that we waive the public hearing.
Well, second, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstention, hearing done, no public hearing.
Thank you, we'll work, I'm sure Mark will have, you'll have, we'll work with you on whatever review you have before the next meeting.
Okay, move on.
Heritage Woods.
Heritage Woods, got a vote on it, right? Heritage Woods, Mark, did you get clarity on that? You said you're going to give it to the attorney there, you see why to, to...
I've had a conversation with the, with the applicant, with the letter writers, the owners of the property. I had initiated a contact with the, with the town attorney, although I had not at this point heard back from him, and we're, we're asking that the commission just waive a decision or waive action tonight until...
We can table it.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to table?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion made. All those in favor, the table.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstention, motion is carried unanimously. Old business.
None.
Articles on the agenda for action. Special permit for Carmine for the construction of Garden Brook Estates, Four Seventy Straits Turnpike, Watertown, Connecticut, in a R-12-dash-five age-restricted development zone. Parcel ID on map I...
One-five-two.
One-five-two, block two-fifty-six, lot three. Do I have a motion on this?
I make a motion to accept the special permit, twenty-twenty-one dash two-zero-four.
Motion is made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained, motion is carried unanimously. Mark?
Was that, you said to accept, was that to approve?
Approve, correct.
The motion to approve.
As written.
As written.
That's right. Yep.
That's what I was waiting for.
To approve. He's been here long enough.
Next matter.
You got that, Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Next matter. What are we going to do?
Have a nice holiday.
The next one.
Proposed text amendment.
We continued.
At those continuance, right?
We continued it to January fifth.
Yep.
And communication and bills?
We need a motion to table it.
Okay, who wants to make that motion table?
I'll make a motion to table item two.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made to table item two. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained, motion is carried unanimously. Okay, communication and bills, anything, Mark?
Uh, no, sir.
Informal discussion, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you all, stay healthy. Next meeting is January fifth. We will see you hopefully then. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those opposed? Abstentions, motion is carried unanimously.
Recording stopped.
Bring your nameplates up, Carol's getting tired of doing our work.
No, it's funny.
All right, I'll, I'll leave mine here for you.
She said that off the mic, though.
Lobby, phone.